Before. I'd like to call the zoning commission regular meeting to order on April 6, 2023 at 7:00 P. M. This meeting is being recorded for transcription purposes and the written minutes and attachments, if any, will serve as the official record of this meeting. On behalf of our virtual audience, we ask the public joining us in person to approach this podium in the event that they would like to speak. They will need to announce their name and address prior to speaking. Additionally, we ask the audience to save personal conversation for after the meeting as additional voices cause confusion for those attending virtually. So I do roll, please.
Fisher.
Here.
Crew.
Here.
Marzullo.
Here.
Manly.
Excuse absence.
Engelman.
Here.
Spelman.
Here.
Machado is in the audience as well as trustee Augustine. Trustee actual online. Thank you.
Our first order of business is the review and approval of the zoning commission regular meeting minutes from March 2nd, 2023. Has everyone had the opportunity to review them? Are there any requested changes to the minutes? If there are no requested changes, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as written. So move. Move second effect crew on favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Mr. Spelman's abstaining. The man's been approved. There is no old business, so we can move on to the new business. I moved the discussion regarding the B one district in Bellis and Hinkley Hills to the bottom since we had already started working through that and created a table. But I think that Ms. Crew had done some additional research, and so I thought, why don't we just let her present that at first? And then if there are any other comments on that topic, we can discuss now. Otherwise, we'll move on to the term consistency topic.
Okay, thanks, Marcus. I'm really excited because I did some discovery. The goal of my research was to find out what was the decision behind the zoning initially for the Buzzard Cove? Why did they initially zone it business? That was initial, my initial focus. And I couldn't find that, so I guess I failed that. But I found something else, something that was really interesting to me. Um, in 1988, late 1988, one of the zoning members brought to the board that they would like to change the zoning of Buzzard Cove to business recreation. Well, that went and there was lots of discussions and lots of things happened. And then in uh, early part of 89, the new owner of that property there decides to come before the zoning and brought his plans for this multimillion dollar complex, this recreational facility. So would have, he would, was going to upgrade the pot pot. He was going to upgrade a restaurant there. He was gonna have all kinds of other things, skating rink, batting cages. Anyhow, what was so exciting about this find was it went to the public for a vote. I didn't know this existed. I didn't know if anybody else did. So for me, it was exciting that I found this. So in November of 1989, it went to the people of Hinkley to vote on changing it from business to business recreation. So initially, I and Judy, you take phenomenal minutes, by the way, because I went back to minutes back then. They're not that good. You take phenomenal minutes. And so I tried, it's really hard to find a lot of information. So I couldn't find the newspapers that had the election results. But last night I, I hit payday. I contacted the Board of Elections. The library told me, suggested. So I did get what the election results were. I knew it failed, but I didn't know by how much, right? I found a newspaper article from a resident thanking everybody for voting no. So I knew it failed, but I didn't know how much or what it was. So the the vote was, well, let me just read what they had for the passage. Hinkley Township trustees on January 9th, 89, created a new recreational business district section, amending the Hinkley Township zoning resolution by adding section 6B R recreational business district to section six and article 16 to section 7.4. Shall the Hinkley Township zoning resolution to create a recreational business district in the area of Hinkley Hills and Bellis Roads adjacent to the Metro Park be adopted? The vote was 728 yes and 1124 no. So I thought that was really interesting, especially looking at what we're doing and how, you know, we want to make it a change the business. And I don't know, I just thought it might shed some light on where we are in this. Because this is not the first time that the zoning boards or the people here in Hinkley have seen or had to vote on the change.
What was, what would be numbers again in the vote?
728, 1124. And I have all the articles here. If anybody wants to look at them, you know, what's what the plans were for that area, why some people were, at first they were all very excited. And then folks started thinking that it's gonna be bring all kinds of riffraff there because they're gonna have video games and that brings riffraff. I mean, you could imagine. I mean, now video games is nothing, but it's very interesting. So I just thought that that would be helpful.
So here we are revisiting the topic 35 years later.
I, I was just amazed. Yeah. I'm like, whoa, look at this. History repeats itself.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to discuss anything further about the B one district? Before we move on to the other topics. And as I said, we'll revisit this again. We do have what we did last time. We'll revisit again as we start to compile the text. We're just doing a rough sketch right now of possible changes.
Can we possibly get copies of what you have there?
Yeah.
So when time comes and we revisit this district, it's kind of all in front of us. That would, that's all awesome what you found.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you for digging into that.
Thanks. There's some duplicate that like this one's better than this one. Wait, there's a whole bunch of articles. There's, there's lots of articles. I, that's why I just was.
Kind of get the flavor of what.
I think what would be, it's, it's almost a shame that with, when, when you're passing a resolution like that, it's yes, no, not multiple choice. Like if we had 1124 said, no, we want a residential, it'd be pretty open to shut, but it was already business. So you're like, all right, well.
And, and you know, the articles, if you read them, they're very, they're very enlightening as to what the real concerns were. And they were putting conditions on it. So no noise, no batting cage, no, no noise after a certain time. So they, I thought it was really well thought out. I really did. That they wanted to propose. So I was kind of, I was amazed that it was voted down.
The public always has the option to do referendums and they can always, if they wanted to move this in residential again, they can move it as towards residential. They so far have not chose to do that.
Right.
I will allow the public, if anyone would like to speak, the B one district, Bella, Hinkley Hills, because we probably won't revisit that again at this meeting. I wouldn't imagine if anyone wants to speak on that topic. Perfect. All right. Why don't we move on to a few other topics that that we started discussing. So there, there are two items that have come up that we've identified as possible issues where there's some vagueness in our terms that I think we should look to clarify. The first one is floor area versus living area versus living space. When you look at our definitions on page 10, we define living space, but living space appears nowhere else in our text. That's the only place you see living space. There's also on pages 44, 61, and 88, living area. Living area is never defined. I think that living space is supposed to be living area. That's a pretty easy clean cleanup. So if we go to some quick words.
So is that a typo in the agenda? Should that be living area versus living space?
Well, there's also floor area.
Floor area.
So the all three of those we discussed, but this, this is just one that appears once and for some reason. This document isn't allowing me to control F. Read it off. So if you look at page 10 of the text, page 10 reads living space, that area within a dwelling intended, designed, erected, or used for human occupancy. This does not include basements, porches, garages, breezeways, or terraces. That's living space. If you look at page 44 of the text. And now I got, okay, so page 44 in the text, you'll see that they provide a floor area requirement. And they say for purposes of calculating, and I can do a screen share right now.
Right, on the floor area.
It says for purposes of calculating the floor area, all areas within basements, garages, breezeways, terrace, terraces, or porches, and any accessory building or structure shall not be included. Then they move on to define floor area in terms of living area. So for floor area, for a single family, one story dwelling without a basement or parcel, partial basement, it's 1,280 square feet of living area.
But living space has a similar definition.
As floor area. It does.
Yeah.
In certain areas, floor is more convoluted, and that's why I wanted to flag that one separately. I thought we could address living area and living space first because living space I don't see anywhere else. So I think living space is meant to be living area.
I would agree with that.
We've got to clean up. Now we've only got two distinct terms. We have living area and floor area. On page 44, you start to see, and on page 44, there's a specific definition of floor area. And sometimes you'll see that within a certain section, they'll define floor area in a certain way. And so in the six R1 dot five and in the six R2 corresponding section, you see that there's a floor requirement section as defined here. Okay? If you look on page 50. You'll see all dwelling units shall have a minimum first floor area of not less than 1,500 square feet. Now that is within the conservation development section, which is not within the standard R1. It's really potentially a subset of the R1, but it's not. And so it, but there it's not defined. So with respect to the conservation districts, we don't really have to find what floor area means. You'd have to argue that it means the same thing that means for R1 dot five homes, which is a standard two acre lot size requirement. Okay, so then the next section would be the R2 section, which is page 60, 61. And that is the exact same as the R1. So I don't think we have to worry about that. Maintains consistency with the R1.
That was page 62.
61. Then we get down into conditional conditional of permits. Okay? And you'll see on page 89. It say that the area of the lot devoted to outdoor display shall not exceed 20% of the ground floor area of the principal building. So now they're saying ground floor area of the principal building. Does that include porches? Does it not include porches? You'll notice that we, so within the residential, we started to define it one way. But you'll notice when we get to parking and businesses, it's defined a little bit different. And that's, I think, where we're going to get into some confusion here. You'll also see on page 89 that it talks about outdoor storage and display areas may not occupy an area greater than 20% of the floor of the principal building.
The ground floor area.
Correct. Page 90 refers to the township Board of Zoning Appeals may approve a senior citizen residential facility with a smaller floor area and less parking than is required for residential dwelling units. Again, it's not defined in any of these sections like you saw with respect to the R1 and R2 definitions. Within the non-conforming use on page 91, you'll see them say that any such enlargement or alteration shall not exceed 10% of the square footage of the floor of the building or structure. So this is actually where it came up with respect to the BZA and why they raised this as a concern of what does floor area mean was actually with respect to this one. Because it, a person wanted to add on a porch and they were trying to understand if, you know, the, in the floor area definition in residential, it says that a porches aren't kept, used in the calculation. But this isn't with respect to that. This is with respect to chapter eight, and it's undefined what floor area means. They are saying, does this mean living space? So do we go back to the definition of a living space, which also, by the way, excludes porches? Or what do we use as the definition here for floor area? You'll also see it in the restoration of a damaged building or structure in the non-conforming section, chapter eight, which is age 92. It's several places on page, on page 92. Let's see with respect to the non-conforming lots on page 93. You'll see it in the parking section. And this is where we get a new definition of floor area. So this is why I want to point this out. For parking, we have section 9.2 on page 95. And there it says, an existing building is altered and/or there is increase in the number dwelling, seating capacity, and or floor area of the building. So there they just introduced floor area. Then in section 9.3, it says, in computing the number of parking spaces required by this zoning resolution, the following rules shall apply. Floor area, where floor area is designated as the standard for determining parking space requirements, net floor area that is accessible to the public will be used. So then when you look at all of these parking requirements predominantly for businesses, they refer to one space for 250 square feet of floor area. Well, they don't actually mean floor area as the entire size of the building footprint. They mean floor as the publicly accessible portion of that. So you might have a retail space, for instance, or a medical, here it's medical, where you have private offices in back, that's not part of the public space. So that wouldn't be counted as part of the parking departments in terms of floor area. But anything that's available to the public would. So you see, to me, at least in our code, you see a little bit of a distinction between how they're calculating floor area for residential, a little bit different than potentially businesses, at least with respect to parking. And then finally, there, I want to note that the sexually oriented section of our book, let's see, is that chapter? Chapter 3, 16. 16 refers to gross public floor area. And this is on page page 130. And so to me, that's much more closely akin to the parking where we're talking about gross public floor area. So I would imagine that means the area that's avail, that's accessible to the public. They do that in 16.2 in two spots. Also, there's definitions that would relate to sexually oriented businesses. And in one definition, they refer to it as gross public floor area. That's on page 20. But then in the other spot, they refer to it as it's floor area, even though it's supposed to match the language on page 21. The language matches otherwise what you see in the what you see in the chapter 16 language. Oh, thank you. That would have been helpful.
Can't see what you were looking at here.
So I, I think. Did you not bring your tablet, Mr. Larson? Are you reading it on that? No. You said sometimes it's easier to read it on your tablet.
I'm actually trying to follow along. I'm looking, doing my best.
And, and so let's assume that living space and layer, living area are the same, which I think that they probably are. We can remove living space altogether from our book, and now we just have two terms, living area and floor area. And then the question becomes, what do we do with these two terms? Do we leave them? Although in certain areas, it's undefined. So we have to assume that it means the same thing as it meant in some other section, or do we create a general definition? But mind you that the definitions are different at currently for parking slash business slash sexually oriented versus residential.
So I'm just curious when trying to, guys that expanded their business off of Center Road in your 130th first day school. So when we were calculating parking spaces, if we're talking about what's accessible to the public.
It's only for, it's only for certain items. So if you look at that, that table, we were calculating it for a warehouse, which does not say a floor.
Okay.
All right. It just says per thousand. And that was the distinction because the miss, the mistake, potential mistake that had been made when they built the second warehouse space is they counted a floor area. And so as a result, they basically said, we don't need any parking spots. And I think that was a mistake because this language does not say a floor area like every other instance up there. And the reason, it makes sense for a, you know, that they wouldn't be of floor area because there's no publicly accessible space typically in a warehouse.
Yeah.
So.
So floor area is used usually for the businesses, correct?
It's also used in residence. Remember, because it's in the R1 and it's actually very important with respect to the R1 and the R2. Because it's specifying what the total size of the home can be or the minimum size. Right here. This is the R2, but it's the same with the R1. But within that, you'll see that they do refer to living area.
So just my first take on it is we probably need a definition for floor area. And I think we're looking at floor area predominantly in the, in the business district. Whereas in the R1, it's living area. And I think we maintain living area in the R1 and floor area in the business districts. And then we just to flat define floor area a little bit differently than we do living area.
Well, it would be because if we use the business definitions, basically means the publicly accessible portion of a building. Because with respect to parking, with respect to sexually oriented businesses, it's gross public available space.
And, and it, I think it would, by going that route, we also include porches, balconies, what have you, as long as they're available. Because right now I'm thinking like, you go to any number of restaurants in the area and in the summer, they have those nice patios. You go out and enjoy that and you're gonna need additional parking to support that influx of, of business.
I don't agree with that strategy, Mr. Chet. I would be very curious from, you know, your real estate background. I, I think that when we first did mention these two terms, you said that there was a distinction from a real estate standpoint between what floor area meant and what living area or living space meant. And I was, could you maybe expand? I know I'm catching off guard a little bit.
Sure. And that's okay. I can give you basis. It's open for discussion at this point anyhow. But there are, you know, like an appraiser, for instance, who's valuing the property or a real estate agent who's marketing the property, they have certain guidelines that they need to work with them. So they would use, they do have different definitions. And it seems to me that the four area definition should be the same for both. But maybe the way that it was defined for living space versus living area, it is, it's incorrectly defined because technically four areas should be, even in residential, should be defined in this manner. So and we did catch me off guard, yes, you can tell a little bit, but as you mentioned, all spatial, you put it in ground floor area. So that's anything that's paved on the ground is how the definition.
Does it have to be paved or improved?
Improved would be a better definition of it.
So a porch, a breezeway would potentially count as part of a floor area.
That's just general speaking. That may be a good thing to consider is maybe ask an appraiser, a local appraiser. I could reach out to someone and see exactly how they define it because that would have a lot to do with what is, our, our purposes are a little bit different. It's for, you know, this is more for evaluation purpose, but also getting that in line with the code on what could be financeable as well. So it affects a lot.
When, when they're looking at square footage of a home, they're not including exactly the same areas that they do not include in this floor area space.
Correct.
So I think.
So I think it's very consistent with what Mr. Marzullo had suggested, which is we should maybe just change all of the residential to be living area because everything here is really based on living area. We'll define that as the definition, just basically replacing the living space definition with living area definition. And then we'll create a definition for floor area that's defined almost like what we see in the parking section already. But we'll define that in the definition section and then we'll clean up whether we mean floor area or living area. And for instance, the non-conforming section where they say floor area, but perhaps they mean living area or what have you.
Right. Thank you. That's great.
Okay. Perfect. So for the sake of new efficiency, what I'll do is I'll work on that and have the proposed definition, proposed amendments for our next meeting. And then we can work on refining that if you have any questions or concerns. So we're not sitting here working on those definitions right now. Does that work for everyone? Does that work for everyone? Perfect. Okay, the next one that we wanted to talk about was group home versus family home versus institution of human care. And I do think that this is a very, a topic that we need to be very sensitive to. I did provide each of you a copy of memorandum that went out from HUD, a joint statement from HUD and. Who is the Department of Justice, um, that described how. How local laws, uh, can and cannot impact group, group homes. So we have that to work on. I also wanted to note that when we look at institution of human care, and I should point out. Institution of human care you'll see is a conditionally permitted use within our residential districts. It's specified on page forty one and sixty. But page forty one, there, there's no definition for what an institution of human care is. And I'll just read to you a few definitions that I found from other, uh, places. This is the Owensboro Metropolitan Zoning Ordinance, Institution for Human Care. Building or group of buildings providing health, medical, or rehabilitation services to individuals such as hospitals. Nursing and rest homes, orphanages, and rehabilitation centers. This is from Falls Church VA. Institution for Human Care means a facility such as, but not limited to a hospital or clinic. Which provides full medical care to humans. I think I have one more, but maybe I can't find it right now. But I, I think them. I, I'm wondering if institution of human care is even, should be a conditional use because these. The, the definition for institution of human care is very expansive. And in fact, we allow for certain of these things already in our business district. And do we only want, for instance, hospitals, uh, you know, medical clinics to be located in our business districts as opposed to in our residential districts? So if, if you're in agreement, and what I would recommend is that we just remove. Uh, institutions for human care as a conditionally permitted use, that hinges, we would just re-straight through those words. We wouldn't even have to define what an institution of human care is because it would no longer appear in our book at all.
Rather than completely removing it out. Would, would that open us to, um, someone potentially coming in and just saying, well, it's an institution for hu- human care. Fits under group home or family home. Group home or. Any number of other things that we do permit. Or is it just, we're, we're just saying institution for human care is too broad. And we have refined enough definitions that we can tell people where they can go.
Yeah, so let me just back up for one second because maybe I didn't provide enough of a landscape for this. So when you look on page forty one and page sixty, institutions for human care are a conditionally permitted use within our residential districts. If you look on page forty. You'll see that a, an accessory use to a principal use, which is a permitted use and accessory use. You'll see adult family homes and family homes for person with disabilities is an accessory use. So when I started looking at this, I was wondering what the distinction is between an adult family home. And family homes for person with disabilities, which is an accessory use and an institution of human care. They obviously have to mean different things, but what do they mean? Neither one of them is defined anywhere in our book. And so what I was suggesting is let's remove institutions from human care, which I think is a very expansive definition altogether. From our conditionally permitted uses that would deal with the institution of human care aspect of this. We still have to deal with the group home and adult family home, um, which is an accessory use within our residential districts. But yeah, it is undefined. The only place that you see these word terms are, is in parking. And right here, we're talking about them as accessory uses. So to your, I think your question was, if we remove it, you know, would, would. Maybe you can characterize it. It was, it was, if we remove it, would it fall within a group home or something like?
Yeah.
And so that's where I'm, I'm saying, look, we still have to do.
But that's not necessarily the case because we're also talking about when you say. Um, institution for human care, that could be a hospital, whereas a hospital doesn't necessarily. It'd be a stretch to squeeze that under group.
Correct, and that's why I think that the, the, it's the expansiveness of this institution for human care. And obviously, institution of human care did not mean group home.
Yeah.
Because we have a different term for that.
So I, what I'm kind of looking at, and this, this is probably jumping ahead, um, and I apologize, I tend to do that. The accessory use, the adult family home, the family homes for persons with disabilities and the group homes, the, those kinds of things. By and large, those end up being run by a business. Right, and I'm, I'm curious if there's any appetite on the, for the commission to review whether or not. We want to allow it in the residential or if it should be limited to the business districts.
I, I, I don't think that we have a choice but to, because that's what the whole joint statement was basically referencing. Is that we cannot put in, we cannot put limitations on group homes that we don't have on other. Sorts of, of homes, right? And so what, what this said is, look, we can limit the number of unrelated members that live in a home. Because that's not limited to group homes. That would apply to every residential home. If we only, if we say only two unrelated members can live in the same dwelling. Then that applies equally to everyone, not just to group home. But what we couldn't do is say group homes have to be in this location within our district. And group homes can only have X number of people within them. Those, those sorts of regulations, my reading of this was saying, we can't do.
Then can we legally even say it's an accessory use?
I, I really don't know that we can.
I, I would agree. In, in fact, going over some other, with different townships codes, a lot of them are, first of all, a term group home is, is kind of. It's just kind of, uh, it's out there as a, a way to call these homes, but there is no technical thing called group home. They're basically people with disabilities. Um, who are able to live together under one roof, you know, each having their own bedroom, if you will, and having common space. With some kind of caregiving and it's their home. So you can't separate them out from you or I, living in our homes. And so yes, number one, accessory use, I don't think it's appropriate. And it's almost like looking at these other townships that don't even say anything. It's because, why are you signaling, si- single, singling out this category of people? They're entitled to live in a home and it's gonna be a company that buys the house and then is gonna provide that service. But the criteria is not, in that case, that it's run by a business, but that this is the home of these people. This is where they live.
Right, still residential to them.
Yes.
I, I, I absolutely agree with everything that you just said. I think that the only thing that we could really do. Is look at if we wanted to do some sort of limitation on the number of unrelated people that can live in a home. But to do that would require us to then have to define what an unrelated person is. Um, outside of that, I don't really know that there's very many limitations that we can put on this. And so do we just want to, you know, remove group home as well from our language and say, look. Uh, institution of human care is really shouldn't be within a residential because I'm concerned about how expansive that could go. Because we don't have a definition of it. And then also remove group home from an accessory use and just realize that group homes are. Just any other residential home within our community.
Yes, I've seen some of the townships define family to say that family consists of. People that are related together by blood, marriage, um, you know. And may include, you know, and then maybe they'll add and, and two or three other unrelated. That are not part of a foster care program or whatever.
And that's exactly what we can do.
And then that way you're just, you know, that way you're not crowding twenty people into a house that can only hold. Four people because. You're kind of looking at it from a practical living standpoint. Great.
I'm good with that. I'm good with removing it. Institution for human care.
And group home?
Yeah, yeah, I'm. I think we just, I think we have to, when I was looking at our definitions, I just think we have to look at our definition for it.
Well, there is a definition for this.
Be, right, but I mean, that's why me, we have to look at a definition for it. Um, because we don't have anything, but we have different kinds of homes, a family daycare home. An adult family home and a family home for person with disabilities.
And I think you can distinguish things that are like a daycare, you know, for. You come in for treatment and then you leave. That's something you can regulate, kind of more like an institution. But if it's a place of residence for people with disabilities. Then they're entitled. Same occupancy, right, terms as anybody else.
And I absolutely agree. Would, would a hospice facility fall into this?
I would classify that as an institution.
I would as well.
For human care.
And, and the reason I'm, as always, playing devil's advocate here because I'm looking at it as, all right. If we've got five folks that are. In a home, own that business and there are caretakers coming in to take care of them. How is that fundamentally different than a small hospice facility?
You're speaking because of the, the healthcare worker arriving?
Because people, not, not even just arriving, I mean, if, if that is their place of employment to be there to take care of folks that are living there. Is that different than hospice? I, I'm, I'm just posing the question, maybe we chew on it. Maybe, maybe it is fundamentally different. I, I don't see it.
You, you, normally you think of a hospice facility as, as an institution because it's not just the. Personal care, but you'll have chaplain care, you'll have various services. In the building, so to speak. But the concept of, you know, hey, I have a house with three bedrooms. And I bring in somebody, that's where they're living. End of life, somebody comes in and, you know, the nurse is taking care of them. That's a good question, so.
It's a really good question.
You know, it's a small scale and. You know, I guess.
I don't know, I would call that a hospice care facility. You might have a hospice caretaker coming into the facility and take care of them. Uh, you know, I, I, many people that end up like have hospices come in and take care of a family member. And, uh, but I, I, I don't know if what we consider a hospice center would fall within the Fair Housing Act. For purposes of allowing it within a residential district. I mean, I, you, you could look, you know, fair housing is very litigious. It's, so you could look and see what sort of case law you see on that, but I cannot imagine that. That they would find that a hospice facility, a troop facility would constitute, uh, you know, be entitled to be a single family home.
Right, because remember, remember, a, a single family home, that criteria is, it's your intent to live there. For your life and with hospice care, it's. You know, it's intended as a. Service, you know, until the end, which is usually near term, so.
But again, I think it goes to what you just said, they intend to live there, the remainder of their life.
Yeah.
And then upon their demise, if someone else then moves in. It's their residence until their demise and, and.
That's a, that's a good gray area. I mean, you bring up a good point, you know, if.
I mean, let's be honest, some of these houses, you could, you could put ten, fifteen people on it. It becomes.
Absolutely.
Pretty lucrative.
Well, and, and that's why, again, you go back to what we could do, and I'm not advocating for this. I think that, you know, I'm, I tend to favor less regulation. Uh, but you, you certainly could limit the number of unrelated members within a house. It would just apply equally to all homes within the township. If you're concerned about having fifteen unrelated members living under one roof, that's how you do it. You, you limit the number of people.
Then you don't have to worry. What they're doing there.
Right.
You just. And I mean, somebody do that realistically would require. Facility preparation, you know, I mean, having the right. Things in place and licenses, and that's the other aspect is licensure. You know, a hospice facility needs to be licensed, so. Just another thing that comes.
I'm fairly certain the, um. Group homes for, for folks with developmental disabilities also need licensing.
Um, well, the, the people.
Licensed people that come in to service them, so for instance, if they need an I C M, there's a licensed optometrist and services.
But the people that do the, provide the caregiving, the live-in twenty-four seven care are caregivers that are hired by. The company, they're not necessarily like. In a nursing home, you know, they're there to provide meals and provide. Care, making sure people get up, you know, making sure they.
It's a supervised care.
Supervised.
So there's different, I think there's.
Substantially different.
Right, so depending upon what the level of need, you know, each group home is different. And they are regulated by quite a few different.
Well, their funding is based on. You know, county funding, those requirements. But I, so if you, but going back, if we define what a family is. And not try and define what institutions and group homes are, then you become. Kind of more neutral in how we're defining those things and. Not getting into what is occurring in that home because. It can be different, different circumstances. There could be people who were former substance abuse.
I was just gonna say a sober home.
Who cannot maintain a job still, even though they're not.
Definitely.
Even though they're not addicted anymore to what they're doing, but it's, you know, it's become a mental health issue, whatever, and, and. They need a place to be, but they cannot work and they cannot be self-sufficient. So there's all kind of levels and, and you can't distinguish that because that's protected by fair housing.
I think I kind of tend to skew towards the dark side of looking at what could be. And think, okay, maybe it does make sense to put this in a business area.
But we're not able to. And I was gonna say, even if we said, for instance, even if we try to come up with some definition of group home, and then we said it's a permitted use. And then our definition doesn't include the hospice care facility, but the hospice care facility feels that they should be eligible to be within the district. Then they go to the fair housing, you know, they sue under the Fair Housing Act anyway. And if they prevail, they're permitted in. And so regardless of how we try to define what a group home is, there's, there's really no way. To assure that we're meeting the regulations and excluding something from taking place.
I, I really think we'd have an uphill battle trying to define family.
Well, that, there are townships that, there are plenty of bases for that, uh, where we do define.
I, I don't, I don't know the case laws to whether or not any of them have been challenged. But I think it'd be pretty tough to hold up nowadays.
Well, as long as the definition, you know, I mean, like the, finding family, that's. What you use for like R one and R two, then, you know, it's, it's the same definition, it's. And if you put it in the criteria that, you know, the intent is to live there, which is part of it, is a family unit.
And, you know, our government still recognizes family units, I mean, our tax system has basis for family units. So there are, you can't say that, you know, it's unconstitutional to find what a family unit is because many. Different areas of the government still define what families are. So. It's an option. It's an option.
So. I'm just gonna throw this out, Boardman Township. Family, one or more persons with their direct lineal descendants and adopted children, including domestic employees thereof. Together with not more than two persons not so related, living together in a whole or part of a dwelling, compromising a single housekeeping unit. Every additional group of two or fewer persons living in such units shall be considered a. Separate family, so you know, they've limited. You know, I, I don't know if that's the best example, and I like the ones that just say. Yeah, by blood or marriage or. Whatever with some additional, but so. You know, they have a pretty extensive. Zoning resolution. But, um, as far as, um. The concept of. Group homes, there's no definition, you know, in here. I don't, I think they even, in institutions of care, nothing like that, so. Kind of stay away from the generalizations.
Thank you. So why don't we do this for the next meeting? Um, you know, I think we, we've looked at this and institution of human care will probably straight through group home, we might straight through. Uh, Miss Singleton, will you work on maybe coming up with some definitions of family, and then at least we can consider whether we want to. Incorporate some definition of a family as part of this process, or if we'd rather. Not address that, because I know that that's been a topic that we've struggled with before, so at least provide us some language. That might be beneficial.
Yeah, yeah, I, no problem, pulling together a few family. Definition examples and.
Perfect.
You know, I'll bring those.
Perfect.
Email them out beforehand or whatever, so people can look at them.
Great, so, thank you. Is there anything else that's in, in, that you guys would like to discuss with respect to this topic? Um, just one final thing, so again, group home and family homes defined on page ninety-seven with respect to parking. I assume that if we remove group home from our language, we'll also remove with respect to the parking section. Would that be your understanding as well, and I can try to pull it up, it's page ninety-seven. Here it is, and so I, I'm not sure sure that this would stand up in court either, let me share my screen. And the reason I say that is because we have one sort of parking requirement. For a single family detached or attached home, and we have a different requirement for group homes. Um, and I understand why that might be there, but again, part of what, one of the examples in here was, you know. Regulating parking for group homes on, on street side parking, uh, things like that's not permitted, so I'm not so sure that that would be permitted because it. Differentiates between the two.
Yeah, recall reading that, you know. The municipalities that try to regulate parking kind of get hit with it because now you're distinguishing that from the house next door. Rather you just regulate parking, you know, you all have to drop, park in your driveway, you know, or no street parking or one. Car per residence or whatever, so it needs to be.
Yep. Well said. So we'll revisit this topic, next time I'll provide some proposal, and Miss Singleton will provide some definitions, and then we'll decide whether we want to proceed. With any definition or, or not for family, and then if anyone else has suggestions for. Uh, group homes, institutions of family care, please let us know and go forward. Are there any public comments with respect to this topic?
I can only hear Bruce. I had, do you guys remember Bruce? Saying there's no way you can define a family. And, um, he would say, you know, there are people that I have in my life that. Are family to me. And, you know, we try to regulate it, and then what if something happens to my sister? And I have all of a sudden her three kids are at my house and they don't fall underneath that definition. You know, we need to think about those types of things if we're gonna. Forward with regulation, that's just my suggestion.
And I, I didn't want to go too deep into it, but I mean, you think about. A couple that's cohabitating before they're married and a friend falls on hard times and moves in with them. We got three unrelated people right there.
I wanna tread very lightly with that, these familial steps to. Consider that, so I think we should explore it, but we definitely want to be conscientious that, you know, we don't expect.
Understood. Mr. Merle, did you have something?
I have a comment on, uh, workspace.
Go ahead. Please, that way you'll make her life easier.
Uh, Richard Pearl came wrote, my two cents is, uh, space to me means three dimensional. And area means two dimensional. And living area. If this was a house right here and it was a one-room house, this is all living area. You put a hip roof on it and second floor, second floor is smaller than the first floor. And then if you have closets under those, under the hips. Ceiling might go from seven feet to zero or seven feet, four feet. Can't live in the closets, but it does have a floor area. And the tax man. The, uh. Well, grazers, uh. Consider whether that closet is drywall or not, whether it's floor space. If it's unfinished, they don't consider it floor space, even though it has a floor. You just consider all that on top of what you're. Already thinking.
I think one of the things that is a little bit.
It, it does specifically say on the first floor in the definition. So that the, the second floor. Is automatically excluded just based on the current definition. So our final topic for the night, night is outdoor lighting control, and this one. But, you know, I, I don't know where we left this last time, and I haven't prepared much more on this topic yet. Um, I just wanted to start to see where, where people's heads were. We heard last time that. Perhaps we want to acquire more outdoor lighting in certain areas or have a minimum standard of outdoor lighting so that we make sure that we don't have the dark areas that we have. In some, in some portions of town where it's difficult to see. On the flip side, we've heard from residents. That there's too much lighting and that is creating light pollution. Um, so it's a topic that, uh. That I, I at least wanted us to revisit and see if this is something we want to continue with or not pursuing further. And if so, what direction you would like to see us work so that I can prepare some sort of language for the next meeting?
So, or, uh, the last meeting, we talked about the lighting, but we were focused or we emphasized the. Um, light pollution as a result of business, correct? Okay. And, um. When you mentioned there's dark areas in our community, I kind of like those dark areas, Marcus. I really like to see the stars at night.
The concern was more in the dark areas within the. Um, business areas, so for instance, town center area, there's some areas that are pretty dark. And so is that a good thing or a bad thing? Do we want to limit that, or do we want to allow that? Do we want to have as part of a preliminary amendment or site amendment, some sort of requirement for lighting, or do we not?
So are we asking, I think we're asking, do we need a requirement for businesses, lighting for businesses?
I'm speaking more generally about lighting, and if so, where do we want it? But if we can limit it to business.
But I think we really need to look at what kind of a township we are. Even our business district, it isn't really a. Walkable business district, it's, it's not designed that way, except in sporadic. Um, for certain events. Generally speaking. People drive to one location. To do one thing, and then. They're off to a different location.
Is, is that what we want, particularly in town center? You know, I like seeing at Buzzard Day, people walking through the town. I like seeing people go to the barber shop and then go to the donut shop or, you know, go over to Foster's.
Yeah, for Halloween.
For, sure, and so, you know, I certainly agree with you that we're more destination directed with respect to our other business districts. But with town center, is that really what you want in ten to fifteen years is cars to go in and to leave? Or do you want them to come in, park, walk around, go to different businesses? Visit the brewery, um, you know, different things, go to an ice cream shop, something else in town where they're here for more than. One location. I agree with you right now, certainly, it's more of a destination, you know, you go, go and you leave, but I don't know that that's what. I would like to see for town center.
And I think that's kind of the, I guess the. Current. I won't say debate, but the conversation across the township is, you know, do we want town center more developed?
I don't think that we're going to have an option with respect to, do we want it more developed or not?
Right.
The. There, there's nothing from a zoning perspective that we can do that can control development. So that it's not developed any further than it is currently.
Correct, yeah, we can't, we can't stop it. Um, but we can certainly encourage it if that's our goal. And right now, I think that's the conversation across the township, should that be our goal? I think the conversation is, do we want to encourage it? Or do we want to hold what we've got for as long as we can?
How does that impact lighting?
Because once you start saying, all right, you need to have better lighting, that encourages development. If, if you need a more brightened town center. You're gonna encourage more and more. Mobility. And the likelihood of people putting in businesses where, okay, you know what, I'm just gonna walk over here, this, that and the other.
I don't know if I, I, I.
So then we should leave it alone if you disagree. Because it's worked. For destination setting.
I don't think the lighting has had any impact on. Walking, walking or driving. I think it's the sort of businesses that we have. That has targeted, that has resulted in that.
So then if they need more lighting, then they'll put it in themselves, rather than us requiring them to put in more light. If it facilitates more traffic to their business.
Well, maybe we, we could. Control so there's no light pollution for those businesses too. So for like downtown, maybe there are some areas that need a little bit light, but do we all? Also want to have the light pollution because there's quite a few residences around here, right? So by accomplishing one. You may be creating a problem in the other. And then. You know. It would be fine for new businesses or new things, but how would you enforce?
You, you really can't, because that's, that's true of every zoning.
Right.
Right, what we do is we look at it and as they upgrade their facilities, as they come in for a site plan review, that's when we capture this, that's when we have this discussion. In the same way that if we up the sizing requirements for a home or up any sort of requirement, impose additional burdens. We can't go back and tell everyone that they have to follow the standards. Uh, it's as new things are constructed, that they would have to follow these new standards, and that, that's part of why I was confused because. Any additional regulations that we put in place inherently require more cost and more, um. It, it's just another hurdle that they have to overcome in order to move forward. I don't think lighting is a drastic hurdle, but. It's the same thing with if you impose sidewalk requirements, it's an additional cost that you have to add, so I don't know that that. Encourages development, and same way, I don't know that some of these were discouraged, and I know, I just don't see it as being much of an impact, but I do see it as having an impact. For the community in terms of what, you know, safety, in terms of controlling more light pollution, those sorts of things, I think it could have an impact. So.
Which, which areas downtown are dark?
Just the, you, you're the one who got, you're the one who would, I think two meetings ago referenced it.
So we have, um, business owners that call the police and ask for escorts to their cars at night. There are young women that work at Happy Dudes Brewery and have requested. Um, there are salon owners that have requested. And I know when Highland Foundation had, um. Something, I think it was back in twenty nineteen, they were walking pinkly and encouraging everyone to go to the businesses, and there were people that were tripping on sidewalks. It was so dark. Um, so it's. You know, those are just the things that I've heard.
So back to what you just said, those, if we pass any regulations or. It wouldn't.
Have remedy any of it. Have no immediate impact. Zoning is a five, ten, fifteen year roadmap. Before you start to see meaningful change.
So. The businesses are having these difficulties now. Then it should be the business, it should be incumbent upon the business owner to upgrade the lighting if they need it. Rather than us telling them.
Certainly, but for new, new construction, we can say this is what's expected. So over time, as we see, uh, building gets renovated. They come to us and we then have the option to, we then have the ability to tell them, you need to add this lighting. Or as new buildings are built, same thing. They would require site visit, a, a, um, a preliminary site plan.
Um, I, I would have to go back and look at the lighting requirements for businesses, because I, I just don't remember them. But again, I, even when I do look at the requirements, I, I have to say, I don't. I don't know the lumens and how bright lumens are when I read those. So that's, that's difficult for me. I don't know if anybody else is, I can't tell if it's that bright or not. Just when you tell me how many lumens something is, that doesn't help me, so.
If we're trying to control light, what I would say is our best. Avenue is probably to control the angle of the lighting, so don't allow lights that flood an area, but help require. Certain forty-five degree angle emission or thirty degree emission, I mean, all lights specify on it, so if they come in for. Site plan and we can say, what's your lighting look like, what lights are you using, what's the directionality of them? And that would allow us to do that, if we're, if our goal is to control. The light, I would suggest that that would be the, probably the easiest path forward. I think that definitely has an impact, uh, in terms of light pollution and I, with you, Miss Crew, like, that's, I like the dark. I like the dark areas. I certainly get it if people are tripping on sidewalks or, you know, calling for police escorts, you know, things like that, I'd be talking with the business owner as. An employee there saying, you know, Matt, I'm kind of with you on that, like, I, I gotta call every night for a police escort, hey, you know, can we do something about that? I don't know that that's for us to mandate, you know, right now, from a lighting pollution, so the angles help. You hit it right on the head, controlling lumens is something that, that I would want to look at if, if we were to, to, to go in that area. And get away from, I've seen, um, uh, some areas, look at wattage and wattage as. Is irrelevant at this point, uh, you know, with, with new lighting, it's more intelligent lighting, smarter lighting, things like that in terms of our zoning, I. I don't know, I just scanned, the only thing I'm finding is lighting shall be designed, uh, as to create neither a hazard nor a nuisance to the adjacent properties and uses and. If somebody finds something else, let me know. I didn't see.
Pretty limited.
Yeah. So that tells me nothing in terms of lighting there. But it is, the, the light pollution, I think is a, is, is, at least in, from my opinion, that's at the top of, you know, would be my concerns if, if we. If we approach this, just. Try not to become. What I see in our surrounding, uh, neighbors. I, I, I'm still not sure from this board if this is a topic that you want to discuss, or if this is a topic that maybe we we don't include in this next text amendment, we don't work further on and we explore other areas that might be more important to this commission. That's why this topic is brought back up again to really decide, is this a topic that we want to pursue? And if so, how do we want to pursue it? Or do we want to not pursue this right now and look at the other topics that still haven't even been put on the new business agenda because we can only handle so much within one meeting?
Speaking of which, just to kind of go on a tangent, I know you don't want to put those topics here because we don't want to have people come in and work. Is it possible, though, that maybe just have a working list that we can have? Because that might help also prioritize. Yes. I can't remember how long the list is anymore. And and we may want to, at some point, say, this is enough for, to move a tax amendment forward. And so that would help. Thanks.
Perfect.
Lighting, lighting is not my priority. That's not my priority. So, but you know, it might be a priority of someone here on the board. It's, it's not my priority.
I'm not ready for it.
I'm, I'm the one who spoke about the lighting and the developments. I don't like all the lighting, so it's not my priority.
It can go either way. I'm not advocating for one or the other. I was saying, these are the two sides of the coin. But it's also not my priority. So if if it's not the zoning commission's priority, we'll remove that one and we'll put on some other topics. And then at the end of, once we get a compact text amendment together, we could say, do we want to look at light, lighting? Or do we just want to move forward without lighting? And I'm okay with that. I don't think that this is a topic that has to be discussed. So take it off the list for now. Perfect. Look at that. All right, that is the end of new business for tonight, unless anyone has anything else to talk about with respect to these topics. I will ask the public if they have any, any comments with respect to outdoor lighting before we proceed. No? Perfect. So the Medina Planning Commission did review the Arborcrest replat yesterday. They did approve it with modifications, the modification being just to make sure that they note that that cul-de-sac has to remain a cul-de-sac and it can't become a through street to cut through to Bellis. I think that was a good notation on their part. And otherwise, I think the replat will continue. The next regular zoning commission meeting is May fourth, twenty twenty three at seven P M. The final thing is, if you, I I just want to revisit or or note that the township trustees meeting on Tuesday, there was a topic of discussion regarding about eight acres here in the business district that's been recently purchased and they want to come in for for a new business development. So I would say, starting with Binky Commons, we have Binky Commons that transferred hands. We have the property about three doors, two doors down from B Commons that transferred hands. We had the Huntington Bank Building that transferred hands going across the street. We had the Icon Building that transferred hands. And then we had the eight acres, which includes where Happy Dudes is and also the old outdoor store right next to it. Those are now all transferred hands going across to next to the historical society, that small empty lot transferred hands. And then you have the elementary school that transferred hands. So there's a lot of movement happening in downtown Hinkley right now. And so just a consideration again is, do we want to do anything else with respect to looking further at the B three district, looking further at some sort of architectural standards? Do we want to do anything else with respect to this? Because we are seeing substantial movement of properties in town center, which would to me suggest that we'll probably see substantial redevelopment in the next five to ten years. So just a consideration.
How much of the of the changing hands has been consolidated by one, two people? No idea.
Not hardly any of it. The, the only consolidation was, I think, the out, the the outdoor was consolidated with the property next door. But that's still an eight or nine acre plot. And they're the ones who spoke on Tuesday. So if you haven't watched that, you might try to take the opportunity to look at it.
So I mean, just like we went through the table for the B four, the buzzer code area, I mean, I think it still might be worthwhile to do that, the B three. I mean, we removed one or two items from where it was before, but to just go through that and see if there's anything else you want to define.
Okay.
Maybe, I mean, we never you know, to go through each thing.
Yeah, we just did that. That was last year's six month process as we developed the B three.
Yeah, that's the Hinkley Town Center.
Correct. Yeah. So the all of those were just created last last year.
Yeah.
I'd be more interested in looking at, you know, the, the area requirements, the buildable space requirements, all the other requirements that we have for the districts to see if there's any that we want to improve there. But just something to consider, we still have plenty of other topics, so we don't have to do it right away. But if if it is something that someone's passionate about and they would like to take the lead on maybe revising that and coming up with some suggestions for this board, we can certainly add that as item new business more expeditiously if that, that is something that someone's passionate about looking at. Um, outside of that, I have nothing else. This crew?
No, I don't have anything.
Not today.
I think next Tuesday is a Ohio Sunshine Laws online training, if I'm not mistaken. From one to four. So I signed up for it. I don't know if anybody else is still needing to take that class, but just so that's up.
I sent up the one.
So, um, question, maybe after we see what our list of tops topics are. But any thought in coming up with like maybe work session mid month to move through some of these things if necessary?
I don't know that I see urgency with respect to any of these things that necessitate that, but if other people feel differently, we can certainly.
Asking, you know, we go month to month and sometimes it takes a while to kind of re-refresh where we're at. And then, so just kind of you know, we did that once or twice last year.
That was done by necessity.
Yeah, I think we do that basically when we're getting stuck on something that we gotta knock out.
Right, right. There had to do with the timing of making sure that it made it to the commission, the planning commission sequenced correctly. So we did.
So we'll just wait till summer to to do that.
I I would not, I, again, I would imagine from a time perspective, you know, we'll see how things work out. I would think that will be in the October timeframe before we finalize to some level a text amendment if we're moving forward, that would be my guess in the meantime.
Truthfully, it depends on how much we want to get through on the list. I mean, if we're going to go through the entire list, we won't have a text amendment for two, three years.
Well, until I, till kind of we have, I may be nice to see that list. Because, you know, it's, you chop it up, it's kind of like it doesn't seem, and then all of a sudden you realize there's twenty things on there.
You had a Google Doc going at one point. See, this is last year.
I did. Yeah. I think I'm pretty sure.
I'll revisit that. Did you look at my Google Doc?
I remember looking at it last year. I'm, I'm guessing it hasn't.
I think I did. I'm not a big Google Doc person, but I I feel like last year there's a push for Google Docs and Inspector Wilson created one and I created one for different, so that we, so we could try to stream one a bit better.
Good. You got a good memory. I don't even remember that.
It might still be out there in space.
I think it was one of those things. I'm like, oh, man, why did he put this on Google Docs? Just give me a printout.
I'll just send you an email. I think the purpose was so that other people could put comments, but it's just, I'll send you an email.
Mr. Spellman. I just have two other things here. One, I, Cindy, I appreciate your, your hunger towards wanting to to get at this, to get at this stuff and and meet meet like that. So just a general comment there. But my, my real reason for chiming in is, you know, we just talked about lighting in the downtown area and and, you know, Mr. Marzullo, you kind of mentioned it's, you know, things are spotty and it's, it's, in my opinion, there's not a cohesiveness amongst the downtown area and and thus it loses some of its appeal to be an attraction. It really is a bunch of independent businesses down there. And now, having heard that eight acres is purchased and I, I lost track. You went through so many recent transfers along the area here that that I, you know, I tuned out after, I don't know, a dozen of them, it seems like. But but not really tuned out so much as like, I just started thinking, you have all these transfers going on and and in is there, is there some other driving factor among the township here to, if you have all these things transferring and people are having great ideas and thinking of things to do, is there some driving factor that's, you know, bringing some cohesion to it? Or is it going to continue to remain where you have, you know, a dozen people just repurchased properties and they're acting in a dozen different ways? And and again, it'll just perpetuate, you know, the lack of cohesion. So it's just a it's going through my mind in it. But I feel like if you had that cohesion, then maybe there would be, you know, maybe it does become something that's a little bigger than the individual, you know, the individual properties and businesses. So, so just a thought that throw out there. And I, I don't think it's anything that we can do or control that. So. My three cents.
Great. The single man, I already gave you the floor, right?
Yeah, I, I mean, I said, but I want.
Perfect. I want to make sure. Take some more time.
No, no.
Do you have anything?
You might get out of here somewhat early.
No, actually, the ones.
Perfect.
Thank you for all you do.
No? Comments from the public? No? Perfect. I will entertain a motion to adjourn at eight twenty two P M.
So moved.
Moved by Spellman. Second.
Second by Marzullo. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.